I'd like to call the meeting forward and ask you to join me in saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Key, I'd ask if you'd call the roll, please.
David Burris.
Here.
Ray Ekethy. Bill Lukens.
Here.
Bob Nelson.
Here.
Ron Richards.
Here.
Allison Ritterbusch.
Here.
Craig Romi.
Present.
Caitlin Turner.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, we do have a quorum. Our first item to do is to adopt the agenda. I'd ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is approved. Again, I remind the council, if there is any item that we're voting on tonight where you have a conflict of interest, please notify the entire council prior to voting. You also have in your packages the minutes from the October 7th council meeting. I'd ask for a motion to approve those minutes.
Make the motion to approve the minutes of October 7th?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. You have in your packages claims. The first item is bills in between for $158,101.51. I'd ask for a motion to approve the bills in between.
Make a motion to approve bills in between for $158,101.51?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the bills in between. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion?
Can anybody hear this?
Yes.
Thank you.
Aye.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Bills in between are approved. You have in your packages current claims. We do have a correction on those current claims. If you look on page six, the charge for Black Hills Badlands of $2,904 is a 2020 claim, and we will pay that in the new year to keep our books straight and Misty happy. So, the new total for the bill, the current claims would be $58,192.99. I'd ask for a motion to approve the corrected current claims.
I'll make a motion to approve the current claims for $58,192.99.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve those current claims. Are there, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Current claims are approved. At this time, I'd ask Lori Scherrard to come forward, please. We do have a special achievement award, and if you come on up to the stage. Come on up front here and take center stage. Hopefully Brett can get a good picture of this presentation. This is really something that is extraordinary this year for us here in Hot Springs. Lori's the head of our safety program and has done an outstanding job. And Safety Benefits Incorporated gives an award, and I want to read the purpose of this award. "The purpose of these awards is to promote loss control and safety awareness and to honor the many pool members who work very hard in these areas. We feel it's very important to let the citizens know of your efforts. Loss Control and Safety Programs save money by protecting your employees and reducing your exposure to civil liability. Today, taxpayers expect local government to be more productive yet spend less money. Your Loss Control and Safety Programs are doing just that for them. And this year, in the past, we've been able to garner a gold reward, which has been near the top. But this year, not only did we get a gold achievement award, but a platinum award. And that's largely due to Lori's excellent job of managing the safety program. And it means more than just hanging a plaque on the wall. Misty tells us that we get a loss control credit for this award of $4,500. And then we also save our workers' comp billing of $3,300. That's $7,800 that you and city employees have saved us by following the rules and making sure you're doing things right. And Lori, we want to thank you, and I wanted to do this publicly here tonight. And so let me put this letter down. And first of all, we'll just present this gold award. But to go with it is the platinum award, which is the top of the rung in very, very few communities in our state that get that. So, thank you, Lori. We appreciate it.
Shake your hand. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lori.
It's fun to do those kind of things and recognize the good people that we have serving us through our city. The next item on our agenda is communications from the public. Are there any communications from the public? Seeing none? We'll move on to personnel actions. And I'd accept a motion to approve personnel actions A through E.
Do you have the correction?
Oh, excuse me. Thank you, Misty. There is a correction on those personnel actions. Aaron, the item A, Aaron is a second-year returning, and his rate is $10.20 as opposed to the $10.05 listed on your agenda. I would accept a motion to approve those personnel actions with that correction, please.
I make a motion to approve personnel actions A through E with the correction of Aaron's $10.20 an hour.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the personnel actions as corrected. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. At this time, I'd ask for a motion to go into executive session for legal.
Make a motion to go into executive session for legal?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to go into executive session. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Note, we're going into executive session at 7:08. There should be no decision afterwards. Oh, I have no decisions as a result of the executive session. Thank you, Ms. Key. Okay, it looks like we've got everybody back. We'll reconvene from executive session at 7:48. Next on our agenda are the committee reports, administrative and finance, Bob and Caitlin.
The next administrative finance meeting will be November 4th. We'll have us 1 o'clock, City Hall, Public Hall.
Airport Advisory Committee, Bill.
Next airport advisory committee meeting is Thursday, October 31st, 8:00 a.m. at the airport.
Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management, Ron.
Next meeting will be November 14th, 7:00 p.m. at the Mueller Center.
Downtown Historic Preservation Commission, Craig.
The next meeting will be November 6th, 12 o'clock, Library.
Evans Plunge Advisory Committee, Allison.
Our last meeting was canceled, so we are going to be meeting on November 8th at 12 o'clock at Evans Plunge.
Thank you. Parks Recreation and Beautification, Cultural Development, Dave.
Need to really shorten that name. But Parks, next Parks meeting will be first Wednesday of November, 3 o'clock, here at the Mueller Center.
Planning and Zoning Commission, Allison.
Planning and Zoning met on Wednesday, October 16th. The present was Don Olstad, myself, Kristen Hybrink, Joni Hill, James Borbor, and Wayne Hagman, Councilmember Nelson, Mayor Cotte, John Gregory. Were present. The new business was Holborn, George Holborn was requesting that a fence line, fence of the cities be moved. So they were going to work on confirming the survey if it was correct and then make a decision regarding the fence placement and decide what needs to be done with that. Old business, there was no new information on the Hot Springs Industrial Park and no new information on the Winnia Property Water Lines. We will be putting back on our agenda the mixed-use recommendations that we were discussing in some of the Winnia properties, and so that will come back onto our agenda. John Curtis, there's a, we talked about that last time regarding the front yard setback variance request. They are looking at different ideas about where to put the garage. At this point, it is still not meeting the possible setbacks or block coverage percentages. There was a long discussion regarding ordinance modifications. And if the accessory buildings, subordinate buildings were too strict, they continue to come to the conclusion that our ordinances do fit and are the most appropriate. Let's see, Mammoth Site is working on their, on their new plot, and they have a lot of work going into, with their CAD drawing, so that will continue to be moving forward. The old armory building that was in question that we were following, the person that was interested in it did officially step away. And so there'll be a determination about what the best use for that area is. And our next meeting is November 20th, 7:00 p.m., City Hall.
Okay, thank you, Allison. Public Safety, Bill.
Public Safety met on Wednesday, October 16th at 2:00 p.m. at City Hall. Present were Mayor Cotte, Bob, Caitlin, Dave, myself, Chief Close, John was there, as well as Lori Scherrard. Under Old Business, we're still just about to have the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers Flood Response Plan waiting for comments back from the County Emergency Manager. Regarding the Pre-Disaster Mitigation Plan, review meeting number three was held on September 20th. There's two goals that the city will be pursuing as a result of those reviews. One involves evaluating our current ordinance to determine the need to require two roadways for access and egress from subdivisions. The second is backup power at six city facilities. The plan is nearly updated, so this item is considered closed and will be removed from our Old Business even though we'll continue to follow the plan, working on the plan. Follow-up item 19-11 regarding Brookside Park Alcohol and Intoxication Issues. Some background, Chief Close asked this committee nearly a year ago to consider banning the possession and consumption of all types of alcoholic beverages from Brookside Park because of the number of individuals drinking and getting drunk. They were making it a place that was very unfriendly to families and especially those with young children. The objective of the police is to be able to prevent potential problems and not have to wait for there to be public intoxication in order to deal with an individual that may be drinking. At the time of the request, there was a concern by a member of the council that the issue may not be as bad as the police thought it was. And so it was decided that, over the course of the summer, we'd gather data and take a look at it. So a summary of that data. Between March 17th and September 7th, Fall River Dispatch received 17 calls regarding public intoxication in Brookside Park. Over that same period of time, our officers received about an equal number of calls, either directly, people calling them, or personal observations. We also received a letter from a resident that lives on South River Street detailing what are sometimes daily and multiple daily observations of interactions and harassments from intoxicated persons coming from Brookside Park. We also received a report from a, a verbal report from a city employee regarding the conditions and behaviors of park facilities directly related to alcohol consumption at Brookside Park. Therefore, based on the information and data received, it's the, was, it is the unanimous recommendation of the Public Safety Committee that the Parks and Recreation Ordinance be modified to prohibit the possession and/or consumption of all types of alcoholic beverages at Brookside Park. Suggested revisions will be forwarded to the Parks and Recreation Committee. And I know I left out some of the words of your committee, but you're going to get it anyway. We're going to submit that recommended language for that committee's review, and once that language is agreed upon, it'll be brought to this council for consideration. Regarding follow-up item log 19-13 regarding the Department of Revenue findings of local violations, notifications were made to that establishment, and the penalty has been completed. Follow-up item 19-15, a draft request for proposal for animal boarding has been generated and is being reviewed by the committee and by the Police Department. Our current contract with Barnyard Vet will expire at the end of this year, and so we'll go out with a new request for proposal, and we want to make sure that we've got everything in that proposal that our, our Police Department needs for that to be an effective contract. Item 19-17 concerning pedestrian crossing at the Chamber Information Center on North River Street. The yellow curb has been expanded that allows for better visibility by both pedestrians using the crosswalk and motorists approaching the crosswalk. And we hope that will address the safety issue that was brought to us by one of our members of the public. Under New Business, based on discussions and a verbal request from the Hot Springs School Board Safety, Security, and Advisory Committee, the Public Safety Committee has started discussions on how we might jointly fund a school resource officer, possibly beginning in the 2021 budget. In the coming months, we will be working to determine the full initial and ongoing costs and funding opportunities to determine if this position can realistically be added. Chief Close provided a summary of Police Department activities, special items of note. The officers have been, have made visits to the Boys and Girls Clubs and the daycare centers. Also want to mention that the American Legion Riders donated high-visibility vests to our reserve officers. And we want to extend our thanks and appreciation for this thoughtful and very helpful donation. Also, the department will be out of force on Halloween, handing out glow sticks and generally keeping an eye on things. There's also been some questions brought to me and other members of the committee regarding officer activities. And in short, do they spend enough time, do they just spend time on the highway writing speeding tickets? And do they spend enough time in the neighborhoods patrolling? And so, to answer that question, and I know I'm going on a long time, but hey, everybody else just said, gave the date of their next meeting, so... Just to give you an idea of what our police officers do, in September, they responded to 800 calls. That's a lot. I'm not going to read every category of call, but just to give you an idea, they responded to nine accidents, 93 animal calls, four assaults, 22 assists to different agencies, whether that's ambulance, fire, motorist assists, or other agencies, one break-in or burglary, 22 concerned citizens, one death, four disorderly conduct, two domestic issues, seven drunkenness, 21 drug citations, three DUIs, 28 extra patrols, nine harassments, 11 juvenile issues, three keeping the peace, 83 miscellaneous calls. There's just a lot of stuff goes on out there. They were involved in nine warrants, either arrests, attempted, attempting to serve warrants or actually serving warrants, three unwanted suspects, three trespasses, 18 traffic complaints, 13 thefts, 11 suspicious persons, three suicide calls, and seven welfare checks. Oh, did I forget to mention 361 traffic stops? So, yes, they do make a lot of traffic stops, but they also are spending a lot of time in the neighborhoods, responding to just a lot of stuff going out there. So, each month, I'm going to give you a little bit of a rundown just to help you understand that our folks are out there, they're busy. They're not sitting in the police station playing solitaire on the computers, so... By the way, our meeting ended at 4:00 p.m. that day. Our next meeting will be Wednesday, November 20th, and we are going to change our meeting time and up it to 1:00 p.m. I'm done.
Okay, thanks, Bill. That's about 27 calls a day that they made. So that's a busy, busy schedule for a small police. Thank you. Public Works, Bob.
Public Works met on October 15th. Mayor Cotte, Caitlin, John, Scott, Soapy, Steve Alexander, and myself were with me. For New Business items, as Bill just mentioned in his report, Public Works also talked about the crosswalk in front of, we've been referred to it as the daily bread. And the committee agreed with the request for Public Safety to extend the yellow curb markings in front of the daily bread to cover the full length of the existing hanrails to increase pedestrian traffic in the crosswalk. The majority of the meeting was taken up by a request from Steve Alexander, a city mechanic, for the council to consider finding a way to replace the existing 1982 general dump truck. Now, the modern is replaced with an estimated replacement cost of $20,000 to $25,000. The dump truck isn't used for snow removal, that is one of the main vehicles the city crews use for the remaining year-round work. Truck already has had about $35,000 in repairs spent on it since its purchase. A used replacement truck, be looking for something 2,000 or newer, with 200,000 miles or less, is expected to cost between $30,000 to $35,000. A new truck would cost around $135,000. Money to replace this dump truck could come from a trade-in of a Kenworth water truck from the sewer department, from the sewer plant. Steve was talking to those folks, and they're okay with trading that vehicle in. Somewhere around $25,000 for that vehicle. Was suggested using the proceeds from the recent city auction. Auctioning off the current general, 82 general dump truck for, for purchasing a replacement truck, maybe around $2,500. And then the balance would come from contingency funds. Committee recommends using these sources of revenue to generate enough money to pay for the replacement dump truck. Here's the, an initial catch, and auctioning off the existing 82 dump truck will obligate the council to find a replacement vehicle before summer, spring, and fall work begin next year. So, we expect that to be an agenda item on the next council meeting to approve selling a broken-down truck that needs $20,000 to $25,000. See what we can get for it, and we'll start us down early trying to get a replacement for it. We have an aging fleet. Expect that as we go down the road, or still on the council, here's to come, we're going to be revisiting how we're going to manage our aging fleet. Scott was approached by the State Home about the possibility of providing sewer to their property on 24th Street for governor's homes. Decided to table until more information is available. And the private property owner's electrical service was damaged during routine city work. City has requested courts for the repairs so the work can be completed. So we did those in, both of us, did that private property taken care of. Old business items, just a couple here that I'll update you on. The improvements to the windmill at the Westport Shaker Park, they can, plus, plus. The camp housing property, Holt Homes has notified the city they have suspended work on the Camp Street property. Mayor work is working, Mayor Cotte is working on Holt Homes to get the project back on track. As Bill had mentioned, the time of the public orders meetings has also been changed to 1:00. The next meeting will be October 29th.
Thank you, Bob. Southern Hills Economic Development, Caitlin.
Our last scheduled meeting was canceled due to weather, and we have not yet scheduled the next one, so I'll let you know when I can have.
Okay, thanks. And Southern Hills Golf Course Advisory Committee will not be made in meeting anymore this year. The course, Clubhouse will be closed the first of November. The course will be open to walkers free of charge and carts, condition permitting. Volunteer Fire Department, Ron.
The 8th of October, Southern Hill Volunteer Fire Department. New business is a discussion they have to come up. With the contingency plan, the new propane tank at the high school. They're working on that, this is just a contingency, it's just something they have to have by the state. The chief has talked about the bad accident that was on the Ford or Canyon Road. He stated, the personnel did an excellent job, everybody knew their job, they knew what to do. He said, good training gets good results. Let's see, next meeting will be the 12th of Little River, Southern Hill Volunteer Fire Department, 7:00 p.m.
Okay, thank you, Ron. Moving on in the agenda, we do have a second reading of ordinance 1203. That's adopting our code of ordinance, adopting ordinance, the, putting all of those into that fancy blue book. And so I'd ask for a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance 1203.
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance 1203. City of Hot Springs Code of Ordinances, adopting ordinance, ordinance.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the second reading of ordinance 1203. Is there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, Misty, will you please call the roll?
David Burris.
Yes.
Ray Ekethy. Bill Lukens.
Yes.
Bob Nelson.
Yes.
Ron Richards.
Yes.
Allison Ritterbusch.
Yes.
Craig Romi.
Yes.
Caitlin Turner.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that is approved. Thank you. Moving on to New Business, item A. We want to set a public hearing on November 4th at 7:00, 10:00 p.m. Temporary alcoholic beverage license from the Boys and Girls Club for their annual Wine Reads fundraising event. And that'll be held here at the Mueller Center. I'd accept a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance 1203. Center. I'd accept a motion to set that public hearing date.
I make a motion to set a public hearing on eleven four nineteen at seven, ten PM to consider the application for a temporary alcoholic beverage license from the Boys and Girls Club for their annual Wine and Reads fundraising event to be held eleven nine nineteen at the Mueller Center.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to set this public hearing date. Is there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion is approved. We also have before you, an amended use agreement for the Southern Hills Community Recreation Initiative. They use the Mueller Center here for gymnastics, look like we had charged them a monthly rate, and they will be missing some of the dates during the month, so they requested to have a per-use rate, and you'll see that in that amended package. I'd accept a motion to approve that amended use agreement.
I'll make a motion to approve contract two thousand nineteen dash six, amended use agreement for Southern Hills Community Recreation Initiative, SHCRI, to use the Mueller Center for Youth Gymnastics from November two thousand nineteen to February two thousand twenty, coinciding with the Hot Springs High School use of the facility for gymnastics.
Been moved and seconded to approve that amended contract. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion?
I'm going to have a statement there.
Okay. We do have one extension, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We also have, as we discussed at our last meeting, with a transient merchant fee, to authorize the waiver of that fee for the two existing mobile food licenses until we can come up with a solicitor's transient merchant ordinance amendment. I would accept a motion to authorize that waiver.
Make a motion to authorize the waiver of the transient merchant fee for the two existing mobile food license businesses operating in Hot Springs this time, in order to allow the city opportunity to review and potentially rewrite existing peddlers, solicitors, and transient merchant ordinance.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to authorize that waiver. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that waiver is approved. We also have in your packages, an agreement between the Hot Springs Public Library and the City of Deadwood, and that's the temporary use of the Deadwood Baseball Traveling Exhibit to be displayed in our library. I'd accept a motion to approve that agreement.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement between the Hot Springs Southern Library and the City of Deadwood for the temporary use of the Deadwood Baseball Traveling Exhibit.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve that agreement. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion is approved. We also have in your packages, a travel request for our finance officer, Mary Hardy and Barb Benson, to attend a front desk safety and security seminar in Rapid City. That would be on February thirteenth, next year. Obviously, a very, very important subject, and they're kind of our front line of defense in city hall, so we think that would be a very appropriate travel request.
Are you going to gun or?
Can't say.
I'll make a motion to approve travel request for finance officer Mary Hardy and Barb Benson to attend the Fred Pryor Front Desk Safety and Security Seminar in Rapid City on February thirteenth, two thousand twenty.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the travel request. Any questions, comments, or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion is approved. Item F is a travel request for our police chief, Mike Close, to attend a law enforcement coordinating committee meeting in Sioux Falls, November eleventh through the fourteenth. I accept a motion to approve that travel request.
Make a motion to approve travel request for Police Chief Mike Close to attend the two thousand nineteen Law Enforcement Coordinating Committee meeting in Sioux Falls, South Dakota, eleven eleven nineteen to eleven fourteen, twenty nineteen.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve that travel request. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that travel request is approved. And item G is a travel request for our city administrator, John Gregory, to attend the Black Hills Badlands Tourism Summit in Rapid City. Again, a very important event, since we do have two great attractions here in Hot Springs, that we want to advertise both our Southern Hills Golf Course and Heaven's Plunge. I'd accept a motion to approve that travel request.
I make the motion to approve the travel request of city administrator John Gregory to attend the Black Hills at Badlands Eighteenth Annual Tourism Summit in Rapid City on ten thirty nineteen.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve that travel request. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Moving on in our agenda, finance officer report, Misty?
Thank you. Wanted to give you all a little update on the SDML conference in Aberdeen that John and I attended. We were able to visit with sixty-eight exhibitors, ranging from people that made and sold granite for cemeteries, to engineering firms, the merchant processing providers. We made many contacts, and I think we both enjoyed a number of informational sessions. We attended city management meetings where we talked about engagement and motivation, leadership. We were able to receive on behalf of the city the safety awards that Mayor Cotty presented to Lori today. As he mentioned, gold is fairly common, but platinum is a level of award that had a small group, and we were proud to represent the cities and accept that award. We went to, I went to some governmental human resource association meetings, where we talked about hiring the right person for the job, and promoting a meaningful work environment. We also discussed working interviews, which were interesting to me, and something that the city may want to look into. I know John attended the Municipal Street Maintenance Association meeting with me, that was very interesting. We talked about drug and alcohol training and awareness. We did get a guided tour of historic downtown Aberdeen, which made me very proud of our historic downtown. I was able to attend the General Government Policy Committee meeting, where we discussed some potential changes to liquor laws related to an open marketplace concept. We also discussed federal bid limits. We attended the South Dakota Governmental Finance Officers Association meeting, and heard DLA and Gatsby updates from Rod Thornton, the director of Legislative Audit. We talked about changes and new reports from Gatsby related to leases and debt disclosures. We attended an excellence in South Dakota Municipal Government Award Luncheon, where John Booth came and spoke to our group. We attended general sessions that include, that included social media, the First Amendment, and municipalities. We visited with representatives from Facebook, city attorneys from Atlanta, and Brandon, South Dakota. We talked a lot about speech, and public officials, and employees, and the way social media, and First Amendment rights, the way that those matter to cities, was very beneficial, very interesting session. And then, we were able to see a comedian, Rex Havens, one night, as we went to the president's reception and dinner. And then, Friday, we didn't get to stay for the session on how to be a good defendant, or avoid it altogether, although we were looking forward to that, but we came home early because of the fun weather in eastern South Dakota. Thank you for allowing us to go to that conference. I know John's going to touch on it a little bit, but the contacts we made, and the information we obtained, is definitely worthwhile, so thank you. I also was able to attend a Rushmore Region Economic Development Alliance meeting here at the Mueller Civic Center on the seventeenth. We heard from tax and industry analysts and market researchers from the South Dakota Governor's Office of Economic Development, SDGOED. Some of the interesting facts that we learned from listening to those representatives, South Dakota has the sixth lowest operating costs in the nation. We're the fifth highest, we're the fifth highest in the nation for business sector growth rate. We're the second lowest, we have, our state has the second lowest state and local government spending. We pass a structurally balanced state budget, and if you're thinking we have the second lowest government spending because we don't do much, we actually, as a state, have the fifth highest infrastructure spending in the nation. We have no state general obligation debt, or GO debt, and we are one of the few states where our pension, our state pension plan is a hundred percent funded. We have the highest credit ratings possible as a state, that's according to standards of Horace, Finch, and Moody's. The other thing we talked about and learned about is a website available through SDGOED called the sdreadytowork.com website, and they showed a real wage comparison, where they talked about purchasing power, those are your after-tax wages divided by a state regional price parity. And South Dakota, although we rank low for gross wage in the nation, we rank very high in purchasing power because of the comfortable tax charged in our state. So, that was really useful information. I was glad to get to go to that, and it was nice to have it right here in Hot Springs, and we did fill the meeting room with folks that were interested in that information. Just wanted to give you a quick update on the surplus auction that closed. I will provide final amounts via my November update, but our gross amount, before we pay for advertising or any of our commission, we received a little over seventeen thousand, things we got rid of. We're already spending some of that money, it sounds like, to replace some aging equipment, but it was a, it was a good thing, and we're happy to once again work with Brady, and I believe that the county and the school sold the majority of their items as well. I wanted to let the council know that our city follows the state when it comes to time off, and our governor has graciously declared administrative leave days for the day after Thanksgiving, and then also on December twenty-third and twenty-fourth, that's on Monday and Tuesday before Christmas, so administrative positions within the city will also enjoy those days off declared by the governor. Wanted to thank the council for approving the training for Barb and Mary, they are frontline staff. I don't know if you remember, but they were approved, and we paid for them to go to some Excel training in March, and I came down with shingles, and they couldn't go, so our credits for those classes are being used to pay for leaves. It was only good for one year, the credit was only good for one year, and they haven't offered another Excel, so we took advantage of this neat training opportunity, but we will still be looking for a training opportunity to advance their skills in Excel, so if one of those comes up, you'll see another training class soon. Still struggling with the fueling system at the airport, it's the gift that keeps on giving. I believe that next Tuesday, we'll have a direct deposit, and when the city comes, we'll keep plugging away. And thank you for the second reading of the appropriation ordinance. Now, we'll go on to the next steps, and getting that updated on our website, and then being ready to start making the changes that some of you have talked about, maybe in some of our ordinances already. As always, there's a lot going on, and the door is always open, and thank you, and the community for your interest in what we do.
Misty?
I think Barry will really enjoy pistol range.
Thanks.
Okay, John, city administrator report.
Thank the council for appreciating me, the opportunity to attend the Black Hills Badlands Tourism Summit next week, looking forward to that. I just get the highlights of my SDML conference in Aberdeen. Had to meet with some, the ISG engineering group about our sidewalk and road planning operation, got to meet the civil engineer who did the original drawings, and talk to him a little bit about how they would interface with the road as planned, and he had good things to say. Also met with other engineering consultants with water resource options and plans to help us with the channel if we need assistance, and they had some ideas of how to use some of our warm water wells in the area, springs in the area. Met with some grant writers, and the availability of a lot of grants, if we can combine efforts with the county and get to that five thousand magic number of population lines, more grants can become available. The South Dakota State University Extension Service put on some good programs, and they work to enhance communities, businesses, and leadership. They have a lot of programs to offer through that program. The presentations that I went to included code enforcement, license rules, safety in the workplace, also candidate attorneys on the social media changes, and a presentation by Facebook. We actually had a Facebook representative there that spoke a little bit about how politics is entering Facebook realm, and how they have a new package for advertising for elected officials. And I got to see a good snow, I know about South Dakota snow now, and thank goodness I had a great driver to get me home. It was very tight. I also attended the Black Hills Rushmore Region Economic Development Seminar with the Governor's Office of Economic Development present. They did highlight the economic development tools that are available online, and why South Dakota is such a great place for business. Misty went over most of those highlights, but one that caught my eye was the lower taxes, no corporate taxes, no personal tax. Coming from Alabama, that's a big deal. There's no business inventory tax, and no inheritance tax. Those are, those are big factors that can draw in business and the workforce and people. On the financial end of things in the office, we're still updating and clarifying some of our standard fees and fee structures, continue discussion of the revision, the ordinance to correctly represent mobile food vendors, with some input from some of the stakeholders that I've talked to. We've also received many in South Dakota DOT documents and drawings pertaining to our suspended sidewalk project and our asset obligation considerations that go along with that two point eight million that they're offering. It's included some reviews, some bridges, and a lot of, lot of details and studies that they've done over the years of those, of those bridge components, and how they would affect us on the life cycle cost. Lastly, I revisited the West Oak building situation, it's got so, and we're looking at options for foundation stabilization before that roadway project comes through, to keep that building coming down. Thank y'all for the second reading of the blue book ordinance, because that really will come in handy in the office. Thank y'all.
Thank you, John. And just for everyone's clarification, it really wasn't true that he had to be handicapped to the door of the vehicle on the way back when he saw the snow coming. He was not headed to the airport to get a ticket back to Alabama.
He was really excited about this.
And welcome to South Dakota. Mayor's report, I want to spend some time talking about the road construction and the suspended sidewalk, and give you, the council, and public an update of where we are. First of all, the last meeting, I reported that the city was responsible for the road design and management of the construction of the road. That was, we've probably been somewhere in the neighborhood of a million dollar addition. South Dakota DOT, and John quickly pointed out that that was erroneous on my part, we are just responsible for the design of the sidewalk itself and its interface with the, with the highway. So, that estimate that we got from ISG that would include the design and construction of that, if it is done concurrently with the road construction, under the supervision of the road construction, a general contractor, two point eight million dollars would handle that. Obviously, the condition for trading university maintenance still exists, and so we've done some things on that this past couple of weeks. We've requested and received information from We've requested and received information from Department of Transportation, as John mentioned, the technical aspects concerning the bridges, the fill behind the bridges, road condition, and more detail on the contract that DOT has let to do crack seal and spa repair on University Avenue. Both John, Tracy, and Billy inspected University Avenue from top to bottom this last Friday. And what we are asking them to do, they will provide us with a factual assessment of the condition of the university, any future repairs as they relate to a life cycle cost. We've also met with ISG via phone, and they will be updating their engineering costs. And we will have to look at ways that we'll have to begin coordinating with the Corps of Engineers. One of the things that we need to yet sit down and do is if we do need to provide the engineering design and that's about a three hundred and thirteen thousand dollar effort, as estimated by ISG, how would that be financed until we get that two point eight million dollars from DOT added to the, to the contract? So that, those details need to be worked out. But I think there is a pathway forward. We will be referring all of this information to Public Works and be looking to Public Works to give a recommendation whether to accept or not to accept the DOT proposal. You, as a council, will have a very important and difficult decision to make. This is not a cut-and-dry thing. We certainly know that that suspended sidewalk will enhance our downtown, but more importantly, it'll provide somewhat of a resolution to a safety issue that we documented that does exist. Unfortunately, by bringing that up, if there is to ever be, heaven forbid, any kind of a serious accident, then any good attorney will, will certainly look that up, and we and DOT will quite possibly be, have some liability issues if we don't do something to correct that. I think we have a responsibility also to give our downtown a future, but we need to know what those costs are, and that's why we're doing the research to really determine as best we can what we're getting into by taking on the maintenance for university. It's an uphill climb, and it's been an uphill climb to get this done over the last year, year and a half. I appreciate the fact that the Department of Transportation has been willing to work with us, and we appreciate their cooperation. And so we will just continue on, and the decision will come before this council, probably sooner than later, because we want to make sure that we do have the opportunity to get that design done and included within the contract for that road construction. And I'm sure that will be let shortly after the first of the year. So I thank you, and we will continue studying that issue and present all the information that we have so that you can make a wise decision based on the facts. As Bob mentioned, we're looking for a way forward to overcome the suspended suspension of work on the Canton Housing Project. We're thankful that private builder has been moving forward, and we, we look forward to re-engaging Holt Homes and getting that project back on track. And finally, we want to thank and congratulate Bon Bong Cars for being open. I know my wife's probably not too happy. I found some good logging tongs up there last Thursday, and so they've got a lot of good, it's a beautiful store, and it's a wonderful addition to our community. And so we congratulate them and all the work that went into getting them open as soon as they, they did. With that said, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
I make the motion to adjourn. Second?
Been moved and seconded. We adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. Meeting adjourned.